Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. The January 8th, 2003, meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission is now in session. Report of posting of agenda, please, Mr. Evans.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The agenda was posted last Friday in accordance with state and local procedures.
Very good, thank you. We have a couple sets of minutes for review. First, for November 13th, are there any additions or corrections?
I'll abstain from that one.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Conrad. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Moran, second by Mr. Grinch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero with one abstention. The minutes for the meeting of December 11th, I believe Mr. Grinch will have to abstain on that one, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Schoenberger, second by Ms. Moran. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero with one abstention. Our public hearing items are scheduled for two o'clock, so we will attend to other matters on the agenda until that time. First matter is public comments. Anybody wishing to address the commission on planning matters in the city of Palm Springs may come forward and do so at this time. If you are here on an agended item, we would prefer that you withhold your comment until that agended item is called. You don't have to do that, however. If you would like to speak at this time, please come forward. Please give us your name and sign the clipboard before you leave. Yes, please.
I'm Shirley Moore, and I represent many concerned citizens. We're circulating a petition, and the petition requests that the plans be abandoned for the homeless center, which is to be a homeless daycare center, which is planned for the intersection of Vista Cucino and Sunrise. The proposed homeless daycare center is to provide services such as food, laundry facilities, and internet access to incidents between the hours of eight and four, eight AM and four PM, Monday through Friday, attracting dangerous and unstable individuals to a residential community. Our question is, where would these people go after four o'clock? What would they be doing? What would they be doing before eight o'clock? The proposed location lies squarely within the residential communities, near schools. Part of the proposed project is adjacent to our property, and less than a block, the main facility of this proposed homeless center is less than a block from our main entrance. It would adversely impact the health, safety, and the general welfare of the residents of the surrounding areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Seeing none, we'll close public comments and move down on the agenda to architectural approval items, starting with number eight, which is case 3.976, application by Dennis Leatherman for minor architectural approval to expand the existing medical office building at 1180 North Palm Canyon Drive. Staff report, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Gabriel Diaz will give you the staff report on this item. This is a 8,000-square-foot addition to an existing complex, and it's an existing surgical center and medical office complex. And Gabriel will give you the details on the project.
Mr. Diaz.
Thank you, Commissioners. The site is located between North Palm Canyon and North Indian Canyon. 1180 North Palm Canyon is the address. The building is proposed right here, existing, Building C and D, from North Palm, North Indian Canyon, and we have Building A existing. And we have a new, we have a new drive approach coming in from North Palm Canyon. It's currently not there. For the addition of this 8,000-square-foot building, they're proposing this new approach to facilitate parking circulation, traffic circulation. To the south here, we have the Medical Plaza, it's just Office Medical. To the north, we have Palm Springs Liquor. And to the east, we have the Desert Regional Hospital. And then to the west, we have a resort. It's called Worldmark Resort, to the north. These are the existing elevations right here, and this is our proposed project. And most of it won't be really visible from pretty much anywhere because it is an infill development on the property.
Ms. Moran.
Gabe, is there, was this presented at design review this week?
No, it was presented at design review about a while back. It was approved as submitted.
Were there any comments?
No, it was just approved as submitted. Building matches existing building that's out there currently.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any need for an additional parking because of the infill, or is the parking adequate for what growth will be?
There, there's actually, right now, there's over abundance of parking, but with the addition of 8,000-square-foot medical building, they, according to our zoning code, they lack imparking, but we're going to do a land use permit for the parking. The parking out there is, right, currently, currently, there's this parking being used, and this parking on this side of the lot is always empty every time I've gone out there.
It's like transitional parkings, people come and go all day long, so.
Yeah.
If I could add to that, we've done a little bit of a parking study on this particular property. The, one of the largest tenants is a surgery suite. They have very prescribed arrivals and departures throughout the day. Very rarely is there ever even noticeable parking in most of the lot. Under the zoning ordinance, under a land use permit, we can do a parking management plan. We don't anticipate that there would ever be a problem with this property. The land use permit allows us, if the surgery suite were to change, to come back and take a look at the parking. They are adding a fair amount of parking in this remodel also.
Just a comment, as I'm looking at this, if I'm, if I'm looking at this correctly, this would be the, the addition as it faces Palm Canyon? Just looking at this at a first glance, it doesn't appear that this addition in any way architecturally or, or from the materials color matches up with what's already there. And I, I just wonder if anybody can recall what design review had to say about it. It would seem to me that there might have been some design review comments on the roof and, and the other features of the addition and their compatibility with the existing building. Do we know what design review had to say?
Mr. Chairman, since I was there.
Ms. Conrad, you can listen.
There was an extensive discussion regarding that, and actually, they committed to painting the entire facility in the same colors, and it does really match, the banding on the fascia does match, so, and this new addition is pushed way back from the street. You probably won't ever see it, but it does match.
Okay. On the elevation, it looks like it's straight across, but in actuality, that's way back. Is that correct?
Yes.
It'll read in a complete different plane, and unless you're literally looking straight in at it, you probably won't see it, or if you do, it would just be a glimpse as you go by.
Okay.
The elevation that the chairman, the commissioner was pointing at is here, and it's on Indian Canyon, and it's well set in. Here's the proposed building, and these are existing buildings.
And this is a walkway?
Correct.
It'll actually read almost as a separate building that sits back in there, architecturally.
Is anybody in the audience that'd like to address us on this matter? Commissioners, comments, motions? Ms. Moran.
Okay, move approval of case 3.976 for minor architectural approval to expand the existing medical office building at 1180 North Palm Canyon Drive as submitted.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Moran, second by Mr. Grinch. Anything additional?
And that would be subject to the conditions of approval that are part of the application?
Yes, sir. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Motion carries unanimously. Architectural approval item number nine, case 3.2158, application by Hormuz Raimi for a time extension for restoration and renovation of the Spanish Inn. Condition number six, granting the applicant six months from the date of approval for the renovation, June 26, 2002, to complete all improvements. The condition noted that the time extensions may be granted as long as the applicant is diligently pursuing completion. Spanish Inn is located at 640 North Indian Canyon. Staff report, please.
Thank you. In July of 1999, the city filed a notice and order concerning a substandard building violation on the property. A status conference was held Monday of this week. The judge granted a continuance to February 22, '03. So we are requesting today a continuance at the direction of the city attorney in order to prepare a detailed project timeline with milestones to assist the applicant in completing the project. A representative of the development team is present and available for any questions you have. We're recommending continuance today.
Is the city attorney recommending a continuance to a date certain, or just to take the matter off calendar?
No, to the date certain, on the 22nd.
Of January?
That's correct.
All right. If I may.
February?
No, January.
I was going to say, when you made your opening comments, you mentioned that the...
The status hearing was to February 22nd for the legal matter. The city attorney is comfortable that the judge is going to continue it because they have shown some progress on site, including construction of the roof deck and roofing materials, and they've purchased windows. We're hoping to put together a timeline that's fairly rigid with key milestones that will allow us to track almost on a month-by-month basis, so that if the applicant does not keep their part of the bargain, we can move forward with the notice and order.
Well, I'm sure we'll follow the city attorney's recommendation, and I would entertain a motion then to continue this matter to January 22nd.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schoenberger, second by Mr. Caffrey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item number 10, case 3.0829C, application by the city of Palm Springs for modification to the airport loop entry roadway and security buildings located at El Cielo Road, Ramon Road, and Ginatri Trail. Staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the planning commission has taken a look at this part of the airport security project once before and asked to take a look at more detailed plans and specifications. We're bringing those back. The only item we're going to talk to you about is the actual entry portal into the airport, and the structure. We'll come back at your next meeting with the final landscape plan for the airport entry road loop system. We're bringing this forward as part of the National Homeland Security Program at airports. As the commission recalls, this is part of the redesign of the airport. It will affect how you enter the airport, and we have to have one common entryway, and as you recall, a number of very sophisticated security stops and checkpoints as you come in and out of the airport. What we're actually looking at is the building facility here, as well as the canopy. The canopy structure is very similar in design, as well as the exact material that we've used at the airport, and also the downtown parking structure. The idea is to have a series of ingress egress lanes, and Mike Williams from the airport is here if you want to know which lane is for which. But again, you have through lanes for passenger cars, large vehicles have to stop, and then there's cycle out lanes so that you can come back and loop around if you get in there by mistake. Design Review looked at this on Monday. They had two areas of concern that I think are relatively minor. One, they would have preferred to see the actual connection points where the cables connect into the columns and the canopies. It's going to be a very similar connection detail that we've used at the airport. We'll bring that back to Design Review for their review. The other concern that came up is they asked if these columns could be designed a little bit softer. We think that can be done, it's just poured concrete, and we can have the architect come back and look at something that's an upgrade over a Caltrans K-rail. That completes our report, we recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any questions of staff?
Did you mention the floating mast thing? I remember there was some question about that.
Well, the floating mast thing occurred at the meeting, I didn't attend, so maybe Alex recalls that, or Mike does.
The floating mast is a detail of the mast that is over the control building, so to say. So the mast is used for structural purposes only on the high-peak roof, but does not actually touch the ground, i.e. a floating mast. There was some concern, and there was discussion, a couple of the Design Review Committee members didn't like that the mast appeared to just end in the air. It is a structural connection that, that will work, but the Design Review Committee didn't vote or include that as part of the motion. So there was discussion regarding the mast, but it was approved as submitted.
Ms. Conrad.
I have a question, too. Did they talk about why the right-hand side has a truss and that side doesn't, or the asymmetry of it?
Didn't discuss the asymmetry of it.
They didn't mind it?
They liked the structure itself. They did have the concern of the two details that the director mentioned, but aside from that, they, they liked it. Two of the commissioners didn't like the floating mast.
No, I understand. I'm not opposed to the symmetry, I'm just, does it look like a boat?
If I recall, they were concerned about the distance from the struck, from the top of the building to the bottom of the mast, and I thought there was some discussion pertaining to that it may be a little different, maybe longer on the mast, or higher on the building, or something of that nature that would make it look not so odd.
You know, if you take a look at it, unless I'm misreading the detail, it does have some cable support to it, and it would not be unusual, even in the world of sailing, to have a structural mast that, that may not connect all the way down.
We have another city representative, if you could identify yourself for the, for the record and weigh in on this, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Mike Williams. I'm the deputy director of operations for the airport, and it's been my project to assist the airport in getting through this there. As far as the floating mast structure, it was a design element that was picked up by the design team when we visited the border inspection station down at Calexico. You are correct, there are cable attachments that come off each side and actually support that. In regards to Commissioner Caffey's specific question, I recall that they did talk about the distance and the distance related to the mast above the structure, and there's another sheet, and it's, I recall, it's approximately 10 feet in distance. Past that, I didn't recall any other specific concerns, but I do recall that the design review did talk about it with us.
Thanks, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Mr. Caffrey, do you have any suggestions, or do you want to leave that to the design team?
No, I don't really, I think it's fine. 10 feet sounds reasonable to me, it doesn't look like that on the drawing, that's...
That, that comment was raised by Design Review, and the perspectives, it, it looks different depending how it's, how it is shown, but if you scale it off the CAD drawings we have, I believe it's approximately 10 feet. I have to double-check that, but I believe that's the dimension.
Thank you, I'm okay with it.
Mr. Evans, excuse me, Mr. Evans, I had a general question. At the joint study session that we had several weeks ago concerning Palm Hills, this, this was an item that was on the agenda that we, that we as a commission didn't participate in, and the, the city council said that they were going to be reconsidering the, the flow of traffic. Is, do we know what the status of that, have they had an opportunity to rule on that, or is that coming back up on a further agenda item for the city council?
We met with the city council in a study session, I believe, at their December 6th, if I recall, I don't recall the exact date, but in early December, we did meet with the council again in study session, reviewed the process, and there were concerns raised by, by one council member, but they did encourage us to proceed and go ahead with the roadway alignment as we had presented it to them.
All right. So, excuse me. So will there be a follow, do they have to, that was the study session you said in December. Will they have another meeting to formally approve it, or was, was that just a reconsideration of something that was previously approved?
It will go back to council for adoptions of the plans prior to bid, and at this point, that is all the direction that we have from council, and at that point, they would actually approve and adopt the, the plans as submitted for bid.
Yeah, the way the ordinance reads, believe it or not, the planning commission has the final approval for an architectural approval item at the airport. The council was briefed and updated all through the process, and obviously, if they had concerns, we're going to work with, with them to resolve those concerns. So technically, most projects the city does, unless they're a public hearing project, the council doesn't formally approve them until they approve bids and specs, and at that point, the project's fully designed and ready to be built.
Right, now, some of the council members spoke pretty strongly about the, the two-way direction, the east-west, and whether they wanted to revisit that. I just, and Mr. Williams has kind of answered that question for us.
Yeah, you know, this project, and, you know, it's something that I don't think anybody in the country has really dealt with, the type of quick response you have to make to keep up with all the requirements. The decision to go forward with that design was made when the planning commission approved it, and we were way down the road on construction documents, and to really redesign it even back in December would have been a significant delay and really caused us some problems with the FAA. I don't think anybody's really thrilled with it, you know, from the standpoint of overall circulation, but it will meet the security needs, and we were able to keep at least one leg of the connecting road to Ramon open, as opposed to an alternative which basically could have closed that completely.
Very good, thanks, Mr. Evans. Mr. Schoenberger, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, just again, on the, on that connecting road, coming west on the connecting road, all lanes go into the airport, correct? And you can't, there's no through traffic in a westerly direction, is that how I understand it?
That is correct.
All right, and in an easterly direction, there is a lane that you can take that will take you past the airport.
That is correct.
Traveling in easterly direction, if you want to go into the airport, is there a lane there that takes you in? Is there an entrance to the airport if you're going easterly on the connecting road?
Yes, there is, and there's actually two entrances if you're coming from the city of Palm Springs. The existing entrance at Tocwitz and El Cielo will not be impacted.
Right, okay.
From the, basically, Baristo El Cielo, if you, it's somewhat shown on that map, but as you'll go, you'll take that first right-hand turn, and then it makes a loop out around that allows you to get into the, the proper inspection lane.
I see.
And that's if you enter at that, at that location. If you're in a smaller-sized vehicle and come in at the main entrance at Tocwitz, you, under the current assessments from the federal government, you won't require to be inspected, and you can simply loop around and conduct your business.
You'll loop in, in through here.
Okay. Thank you. Unless there's any further comment, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as submitted.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Caffrey, second by Mr. Grinch. And Mr. Evans, just to understand the conditions, the, the extra connection at the end of one of the supports, as well as a review of the concrete, are architectural issues that will be handled at staff level with Design Review?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Nothing further then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Mr. Williams, we appreciate your help. All right, it's now past two o'clock, we'll go back to public hearing agenda. First is item number two, case 5.0916, application by Matthew Dragisovich, excuse me, Dragisovich, charitable remainder trust for a general plan amendment and change of zone to redesignate 5.11 acres of land located at 4155 Matthew Drive from M15 and C to rezone, excuse me, from M15 to GC and C, and to rezone R2 to CM and O20. This is located in section 30, and this was continued from the November 13th meeting. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, I now have to abstain from that matter.
Thank you, Mr. Schoenberger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We just have a fairly brief update for you, so that we can give you a progress report. This item has been on your calendar for quite some time now. It's been a continued public hearing item, and the applicants are in the audience, and we think we have a very good report for today. What we intend to do is, is work on a couple of things between now and your next meeting, and bring back a full staff report, and if you're in concurrence today, we'll bring all of the documents back ready for your adoption. But what I'd like to do is give you a quick overview. As I recall, during the public hearings, the planning commission had concern about the existing buildings. We have an auto repair facility, as well as a general propulsion building that's primarily boat motors and other nautical-type items that look kind of odd in the desert. At this point in time, General Propulsion, which is the boat motor company, they are moving out. They are not going to be a tenant on the property, they're going to relocate, and there is a prospective buyer for the property that would completely renovate that site. site, probably demolish all of the buildings and structures on the back portion of that property. There, the, we've met on-site with both the property owner representative and as well as the tenants for the auto repair shop, and they are going to bring the property up to code. We've talked to them about all the items that need to be done relative to zoning enforcement, and we've also inspected the property with the building division to take a look at the actual building code issues that need to be brought up to code in that particular land use. So we think both of the tenant issues are going to be resolved, and we believe that there's a buyer for the property, once the change of zone goes through, and the buyer has some ideas relative to land uses. The buyer would, would like to use the rear property for a RV and recreational vehicle storage facility, basically mini-storage warehousing-type land use, some open, maybe some enclosed. We haven't really talked about the project form. The property is zoned commercial manufacturing, or that's the proposed zoning. Under the commercial manufacturing zone, there's a broad range of land uses that are permitted, warehousing, wholesaling, tow yards, things of that nature. Specifically, it doesn't say outdoor storage or mini-warehousing. What we're going to do for your next meeting, because we're trying to package up something that not only resolves the existing land use issues, puts the possibility of a change of zone maybe in better light with the planning commission, but also brings a new property owner in to come in and effectuate all the changes, we'll probably bring back a planning commission determination that will talk about putting mini-storage warehousing-type land uses into the CM zone as being similar to other uses allowed in that zone, and we'll give you a full breakdown on where CM zone is, because that would be a citywide issue. But I think, you know, from staff's perspective, we're very pleased with the progress. The trust has worked very hard on this. They have not sat idly, even though this has been on your calendar for, for a while. We've given you an outline of what we would, would hope the schedule to be. We're going to discuss it today. If the commission's comfortable with the direction we're heading, we're going to put all the action items together for the meeting on the 22nd. If the commission is comfortable with that, we would move it on to the city council. And then we gave you a, a period of time that the actual zone change would, would become effective. It wouldn't be effective until March 19th. We believe that the General Propulsion Group will be off the property. Both the tenant and the city are, are watching the removal of the, the materials to make sure that everything is adequately removed. But we were very pleased with the progress, and I think the prime concern that we heard from the planning commission had to do with that land use and that activity. And then the, the car dealer, or car repair facility was of concern, but maybe not quite as high priority. I think we can bring all of them up to, up to current code with this type of action. Mr. Chairman, that's our update. I know the applicant is, is in the audience. They may or may not have some comments, but this is a public hearing item.
Right. Is there any comments or questions before we open the public hearing, Ms. Morantz?
Doug, I didn't hear you mention anything about the auto repair and the engines and so forth on that portion of the property. Has the, have they agreed as far as the block wall is concerned, or something to keep it out of view?
Yes, those are the types of things that they're going to have to do to bring this into compliance. And we've, we've walked the entire property, we've talked about where the block walls will be needed. And they're aware that some of the block walls, depending on how the outdoor storage works, may have to be as high as eight feet.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Conrad?
Doug, can you just explain why the change of zone is necessary, being that there may be a new owner, and could this not be handled with a conditional use permit, or did absolutely, in order to complete the sale, that we need to have the change of zone, or since there's going to be a different land use anyway, why do we have to go through this?
Yeah, that, that's a very good question. From the standpoint of why is all this necessary? Currently, the, the property has a general plan and zoning designation for medium-density residential, which makes both of these land uses non-conforming. The applicant, the Dragisovich charitable remainder trust, would like to try to sell the property with some of the commercial value, the existing business for auto repair, and obviously, at this point, a, a new type of commercial business in the back parcel. So in order to do this, we would have to change the zone, because we, we cannot approve new commercial or commercial manufacturing land uses. So on the back parcel, if they were to ta, remove all of the general propulsion equipment, tear the building down under the current zoning, they'd have to build it out as residential. And that back parcel would be wedged in between residential property and commercial properties on two sides. So what we're trying to do, and what the applicant's trying to do, is just adjust the line in that neighborhood where the commercial development is, where the new boundary adjustment would be, the Dragisovich Trust also owns that adjoining property. So they're amenable to this change, and then any prospective buyer would obviously buy it, knowing that they've got commercial property next door.
I have one quick question, Doug.
Mr. Caffrey.
Will we still end up with some type, some medium-density residential as a buffer between the commercial and the vacant land to the east?
There, there would, on that east boundary, it would be commercial manufacturing, abutting a large tract of R2 zone property.
R2, okay.
Right. And the, the most adjoining part of that property is where a single-family home exists, and that property owner is in the audience and is very supportive of this change.
Great, thank you.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing item, and even though we are going to be entertaining a motion to continue the matter to January 22nd, anybody wishing to address the commission on this matter may come forward at this time if you so choose.
Good afternoon. Pleasure to be here. I just wanted to bring out the fact that we now have in writing from General Propulsion, the fact that he will vacate the property prior to March 15th. He has started to vacate already. He's agreed in writing to leave it debris clear, all his stuff gone, including the debris. We're putting it in terms of broom clean. So that part is taken care of. The prospective buyer for the property is in the audience. He's agreed to tear down the building once he takes title. He's not willing to do, do any of this, of course, until the zoning has changed. I'm also here to answer any questions the commission might have, as well as the prospective buyer. Mr. Plain would be glad to answer any questions as well. We're ready to open escrow as soon as we have an indication that this is going to proceed. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Just for the record, that's Lloyd Marionoff, and I'd ask that you would sign the clipboard before you leave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything further? Mr. Evans, should we actually close the public hearing today, or just make a motion for?
You would continue the public hearing and the matter.
All right. Entertain a motion then to continue the public hearing and the matter.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move continuance.
That would be to January 22nd?
Yes, sir.
And I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Morantz, second by Mr. Caffrey. Roll call vote, please, Michelle?
Ms. Conrad?
Aye.
Ms. Morantz?
Aye.
Mr. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Caffrey?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0 with one abstention. Thank you. Next item, number three, case 5.0930, the application by West End Leisure Group for a conditional use permit to add an accessory-use spa to an existing 15-unit hotel located at 288 East Camino Monte Vista. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an application by West End Leisure Group for an ex, for CUP, for an accessory-use spa at an existing hotel located at 288 East Camino Monte Vista. The property is zoned R3, and the R3 zone does allow accessory-use spas for hotel guests' use only, subject to about four standards. As I mentioned, the facility is to serve hotel guests only. The hotel has to have a minimum of 15 guest rooms. The staff should be licensed and trained in the programs provided, and the facility should comply with chapter 5.34 of the municipal code, which is the chapter regarding massage establishments. The spa itself has two, has, has a treatment room of 312 square feet in size, and massage rooms for, at 634 square feet in size. The hotel itself is at 9,200 square feet and has 15 guest rooms. With that, I'm just going to take you a little bit through the plans. Thank you. Sorry. Here's the exhibit here, just to situate you. This is Camino Monte Vista at the bottom. Indian Canyon Drive is over here, so it's sort of like the second parcel east of the intersection of Indian and Camino Monte Vista. What the applicant has done here is actually just showing you two blown-ups here of A, which is the massage room facilities, and then B, which is in this corner, which is the treatment rooms. As I said, this was 312 square feet. This is about 600 square feet. The hotel itself is 9,200 square feet, and the hotel has 15 guest rooms. All of these are existing already. This was all constructed and operated without permits, so the new owner is basically trying to get retroactive approvals right now for what's already there. In order for the commission to consider this conditional use permit, you have to consider five findings pursuant to the zoning ordinance, which is that the use is appropriate for the location, it's necessary and desirable for the development of the commit, the community, the site is adequate in size and shape to accommodate the use, and the use relates to the streets and highways that are able to carry the traffic generated by the use, and the conditions imposed are necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. Staff has analyzed this project in relation to the R3 zone and also to these findings, and find that it does comply with those findings and with the zone requirements, and therefore, we are recommending approval. Thank you much.
Thank you, June. Any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? This is a public hearing item. Anybody wishing to address the commission on this matter may come forward at this time. Please give us your name and sign the clipboard before you leave. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Back to commission for comments, motions.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Conrad?
One, is this the old Elizabeth Court Hotel, Doug? And two, is, has the building department been out there, not just the planning department, to make sure that it's constructed appropriately? I mean, that's a dumb question.
I, I missed your first question.
Is this the old Elizabeth Court Hotel? I don't know what, where this place is, and...
I don't know it by that, that name.
Okay. And then, has the building department, has a building inspector been out there too, besides the planning?
As I understand, the applicant would probably like to give an update about that, if the commission would allow. Thank you.
Yes, sir, if you'd give us your name, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Richard Weiss. I'm the owner of the East Canyon Hotel, which was indeed the old Elizabeth Court Hotel. It was constructed with the spa prior to my purchase of it. I closed escrow in August, and I believe the building department has been out to inspect all of it, certainly because of my business license.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could add to that, in order to get all the permits secured, and, you know, we will have to issue permits for some items, and, you know, that will involve a full inspection by the building division.
Very good. Can I answer your question? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything further, then? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve case number 5.0930, subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Schoenberger, second by Ms. Rom, uh, Ms. Morantz. Roll call vote, please, Michelle?
Ms. Conrad?
Aye.
Ms. Morantz?
Aye.
Mr. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenberger?
Aye.
Mr. Caffrey?
Aye.
Mr. Klachko?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman?
Just to clarify that we are adopting the various findings that are set forth in the report. Did you have a further question, or was that...
Yeah, I, I'd just like to, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to thank the applicant. They submitted an absolutely outstanding application, and the exhibits were fantastic. It made our review of this much easier. And while we, we didn't show you everything that they submitted, it was, it makes our job much easier to have a very complete application, we thank them.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment. We can tell, just looking at the exam, the exhibits that were presented to us, that they look like they're, they're detailed as if it was new construction, not just, you know, reviewing something that was already in place. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item is number four. Case 3.2277, tentative track map 3925, application by Merilest Partners, Kenneth Bernard, for tentative track map and architectural approval application for a 14-unit condominium complex on approximately 43,926 square feet of land located at 1532 via Merileste.
Mr. Chairman, if I could give you a brief introduction on this project?
Please.
Uh, we're very pleased to bring this project to the planning commission today, because there was a day, and it wasn't too long ago, that this property was a severe public nuisance. It was one of the worst of the worst in town. The property owner at that time has nothing to do with the current property owner, refused to upgrade the property, refused to even keep it reasonably safe. And the city used its recapture our neighborhood program to basically warn the property owner, sternly warn the property owner, and then proceed through the court system to get a court authorization to knock down the building. And we then leaned the property. And we've had a vacant lot out there for a couple of years. It's our intent in that program to encourage property owners to first and foremost rehabilitate your property. If you don't, under this program, the city will use every tool it has to ensure that you either rehabilitate the property, or will ask the courts for permission to demolish the property. And we do that in a very program manner. It's a very lengthy process. It gives plenty of time for a property owner to say, I think I'll fix the property because the city is serious. In this case, we're very pleased because in this neighborhood, the Cottonwood-Chuckwalla area, which is from Indian Canyon to Avenida Caballeros, and it's an area next to one of our fine middle schools, and it's a neighborhood that about six and a half years ago, the city council said, we need to fix this neighborhood. And things that have occurred, just to give you an idea of, of the sequence of events, Desert Shadows was the first investor in this neighborhood, and, and we're all aware of all the investment that they've made. They've gone from about a 12-unit hotel to a resort complex that includes hotel amenities as well as condominium amenities. They're on one end. Coachella Valley Housing Coalition on the other end, next to the middle school. They're just finishing up their self-help housing program. It's a series of single-family homes. We think it's a, a good anchor on that end, and right now, this project is dead center in the middle. And if you drive through that neighborhood today, almost every property is upgraded. The property owners that did not want to upgrade their properties, most of them has sold their properties and moved on. They realized they could no longer be a slumlord in the city of Palm Springs. That doesn't mean that the neighborhood's completely rehabilitated, that every property is perfect. But when we meet with neighborhood representatives in that neighborhood, the people that have lived there, from before we started the program to today, they will tell you it's a better neighborhood to live in, there are fewer problems, and all you have to do is drive through, and you can see new paint, new landscaping. And it's almost every day of the year, somebody's fixing up a property. So we're really pleased that we have a new development project, and, and with that introduction, Gabriel Diaz will give you an overview of this project.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. This property is located between Cottonwood and Chuckwalla, and via Merileste. We were talking, Doug was talking about the Coachella Valley Coalition Housing. That's on the other end, in front of the, that middle school. And so this is right on the other side of the block. So on this block, you'll have two new, new, two new construction sites. Very, it would be improving the neighborhood very good. The applicant is proposing 14 condo units. There will be 10, about 1,400 square feet with two bedrooms, and the, there will be four with three bedrooms, about 1,500 square feet, and the, those four would be at the ends. Every condo will be... Every condo will be provided with their own garage, two-car garage. You will enter from Via Miraleste, go in to your garages, and go out via Miraleste by the circular drive. There are four, and a handicap space for guest parking. The accommodations are the pool and two patio, two patio and barbecues for the residents and guests. Each condo will have its separate courtyard for privacy and they'll have decks also. The two-bedroom units will have an additional deck on top and the four-bedroom units, I'm sorry, three-bedroom units on the end will not have the additional deck on the top, so that would make it, so that, they can't look over to the adjacent properties. As far as my report, there, they, the lot coverage is exceeding thirty percent, so the applicant will apply for administrative minor modification and the lot coverage will be thirty-three percent. And staff is recommending approval of that.
Any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Ms. Conrad?
How tall is this building?
Twenty-four feet.
Excluding the rooftop decks which are shoved to the center?
No, it'll be twenty-four feet up to here.
Does that count the parapet walls or...
The parapet, yes. Currently, I think they might be a foot above right now, but they're working on their grading, so it'll be twenty-four feet.
And we did add a condition of approval. You know, one of the concerns anytime we have rooftop decks is to make sure that, one, the rooftop deck is maintained the way it was originally approved. It doesn't become a, a location for all kinds of additional accessory structures, both physically added on as well as things that people drag up to the rooftop. And the other reason of not having them on the end was just so that you would not see the rooftop decks unless you actually looked down the parking courtyards. Our experience, even though they're really neat amenity, they're not used very much. You know, people will use other parts of the property, it seems, than to go up to the rooftop deck, so we don't want it to become an area that people use for storage.
And that's in the CCNRs, though?
That's one of the conditions and we'll make sure that's in the CCNRs and it basically says that they can't add anything.
Mr. Stevens, could you point out that particular, I didn't notice that when I looked at it? Or while we have the public hearing, if it's not handy, we can try to locate it.
Chairman, it's condition number nine and it's the last sentence, I believe. "Modifications to rooftops shall be prohibited. All patio furniture, other accessory use of roof decks shall not be visible from any viewpoints." We might want, you might want to ask us to clarify viewpoints. Be off-site viewpoints.
This is a public hearing item. Anybody wishing to address the commission on this matter, please come forward at this time. Give us your name and sign the clipboard before you speak. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Back to commission. Mr. Schoenberger.
And Doug, how was this received by design review?
Design review, I think overall, really felt the architecture was strong. They had a lot of questions about how the depth and detail and recesses worked. Lot of times, they have more questions when they see something that they like because they want to understand exactly how it was done. There was a fair amount of discussion about the backside, the parking courtyard side. You know, one of the recommendations in the motions agenda is to add some landscaping in that courtyard, so you get some vertical break and horizontal. It's a very wide courtyard and it's probably the reason why they were comfortable with it. The one item they spent most of the time on, as I recall, was the issue that from the parking courtyard side, you don't have any access to the units except through the garage. You, in theory, would have to come out of your garage, use our magic genie, close the garage door to go to the pool if you wanted to go that way, or you would have to come out the front door, out along the sidewalk, walk down the sidewalk and into your pool. They felt because it's such a small site and a small project and the fact that they made that courtyard very wide and ample and with a median island in it, that it was probably a better use of the space than to maybe tighten the building in tighter and try to do something different. But I think overall, they were very pleased and I think they felt it would be a real good addition. Gabriel, I don't recall any other significant discussion.
Just a comment. We gave a, an applicant a pretty hard time at one of our planning, study, one of our study sessions that had a, it was somewhat similar design and concept, that is, what you see as you enter the project, up one side and down the other garage doors. This, however, seems to me a little bit different because there is some architecture on the, the garage side of the buildings and there is a, that median, if nicely landscaped, breaks that up a little bit. But I would just make that comment. I do see a difference between what we're looking at here and what we looked at, at our study session a while back. And this, this looks a little more acceptable to me and if the design review folks were happy with it, I think otherwise, it's a nicely done project and again, a valuable addition to that neighborhood.
Just to shed some light on it, I did attend that design review meeting and that's exactly the point that I raised because we talked about the, the project on Baristo that you're referring to and how, and they were familiar with that project. I think the overall size of this project, being as small as it is, they felt that the impact was not as great and, and that's why they suggested some additional landscaping on, not in the median, which they also, already felt was pretty substantial, but on the sides facing the doors, maybe between the units. There was some discussion that if they, if they tried to make some additional access on that side, they'd reduce the size of the garage doors and, and the access and it wouldn't, it just didn't, just didn't work and they were impressed with the overall architecture for the project and I think that's what was persuasive for them. Anything further? Motion, then? Ms. Morantz?
I'll move approval of case number 3.2277 and recommend to the city council approval tentative track map 30925 for the construction of a gated fourteen-unit condominium complex on forty-three thousand nine hundred twenty-six square feet of land located at 1532 Via Miraleste.
Would that be subject to the conditions of approval and the suggestions of staff as set forth in our report?
Yes.
Sir, a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Morantz, second by Ms. Caffrey. Roll call vote, please, Michelle.
Ms. Conrad?
Aye.
Ms. Morantz?
Aye.
Mr. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenberger?
Aye.
Mr. Caffrey?
Aye.
Mr. Klachko?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We're moving right along today. Next item is number five, case 5.0866, PD 267, tentative track map 30054, the application by the Burnett Companies for a planned development district and tentative track map 30054 for the subdivision of sixty-one point nine acres into two-hundred-twenty-seven single-family residents with minimum lot size of five and six thousand square feet and a limited number, fifty-six, of twenty-four-foot-tall two-story residents within a gated community located at the northeast intersection of Sunrise Way and San Rafael Drive. Staff report, please.
Thank you. This is an item that has been before this body in the past. In January of two thousand and two, the council approved an application similar to this for two-hundred-and-thirty-eight residential lots on the same sixty-one point nine acres. Subsequent to that original approval, the applicant has redesigned the map to provide for a larger combined recreation amenity and subsequently reduced the number of lots and is seeking approval of the revised map and PD this afternoon. They're looking at an amenities package which would include an upgraded multipurpose area and approximately thirteen thousand square feet of a recreation center. They envision the facility providing area for ballroom dancing, bingo, and other formal functions. In addition, the building may include spa, fitness center, library, and other amenities. The site is generally level, sloping one to two degrees in area, and the Whitewater River Channel runs just to the northeast of the site for approximately three thousand feet. The revised map would have two-hundred-and-twenty-seven lots ranging in area from a minimum of five and seven thousand square feet, most of the lots between five and eight thousand, and some of the larger lots up to eighteen thousand square feet in area. Again, these are, it's a small lot subdivision, fifty and sixty-foot-wide lots. Minimum proposed lot depths are a hundred feet. They're requesting five-foot front yard setbacks and other reductions in the proposed setbacks, three-foot side yards, five-foot rear, fifteen-foot rear yard setbacks, and a minimum of twenty-five or a maximum of twenty-five percent two-story units. The maximum number of two-story units that would be permitted would be fifty-six. And again, similar to the map that you reviewed about a month ago, we have designed it so there would be essentially a two-hundred-foot buffer from Sunrise and existing development where these units would not be allowed. Again, we favor the two-hundred-foot distance for reasons described earlier in your staff report, but essentially, it will maintain the feel of single-story from the perimeter. A traffic report was prepared as part of the earlier environmental review as part of this project and the mitigation for traffic impacts would allow for the construction of a traffic signal at the intersection of Sunrise and San Rafael Drive. Again, other improvements associated with this project would include widening Sunrise to the ultimate right-of-way, a landscape median on Sunrise and various project entry improvements. In addition, you may recall a discussion that we had in the past on this project regarding traffic calming throughout the project with the use of narrow street sections, approximately fifty to a hundred foot in length, placed strategically throughout the project in the areas where we feel that speeds could become excessive were the traffic calming devices not implemented. In these traffic calming areas, the roadway is limited to a width of twenty-four feet, which meets fire and code requirements, but would eliminate any parking ability in those locations. Again, the approval today is relying upon the earlier initial study and environmental assessment, which was completed last year. And the applicant is available for any questions. I will approach the board and kind of walk you through the project to show you what the differences are at this time. As you may recall, there was a project entry which was originally designed like this because of a spite parcel existing in this area. Subsequent to that original approval, the applicant has acquired all the parcels necessary to create an intersection which actually, to the best of the ability, aligns with San Rafael. We had concerns with this. The conditions were written so that there's a, I think, condition twenty-three calls for the alternative entry. Subsequent to the writing of this report, the applicant has redesigned it so that what we originally called the alternative entry is the project entry at the southern entrance. Again, the main entry, or the northern entry, would align with the map that was approved about a month ago, tentative map 30058, and kind of create an intersection here for two projects, this one as well as the one to the west. You may recall, this project wraps around the fairways of Palm Springs Country Club, which are just to the north of an existing mobile home park. We have Sunrise here and the Wash here with the berm area in this location. Changes between this map and the earlier approval, you'll notice that this area is called out as a large recreation lot. In the earlier map, the road continued through here with lots here and facing on the, on the fairway. With this revision, the applicant has designed this as kind of a traffic intersection with a turnaround area and a cul-de-sac here and reserved this area for future recreation uses. This would be the location of a clubhouse on a, kind of a master plan or combined master plan for this map, the map that was earlier approved to the west, and then potentially the addition of a future map with around a hundred units to the north, kind of a master plan community. Again, the earlier approval, we did discuss the issue of gating of the streets. However, it was left to the discretion of the applicant and we have left that condition as earlier approved, again, to allow the applicant to be the final determiner of whether the streets should be gated. We don't have a complete design of the recreation area and amenities. We're envisioning that to be part of the final PD process. The applicant indicates that they have acquired the, they have acquired this. It is in transaction mode, pending approval. Will transfer to the new owner and they'll move forward rapidly on the PD. The approval today would actually extend, essentially gives the project another year of life. This earlier map has a two-year life. We're working under those constraints right now. This map would have one year left on it were the commission not to approve the revised map today. This diagram shows the north entry right here and then an older recreation amenity, which was anticipated to be right here. We don't have revised drawings that show how the new amenity would be located or the uses that would be involved in it, but we have provided some conditions that talk about what we're looking for in terms of those amenities. In terms of how the lots lay out, again, we have both five thousand and six thousand square foot lots. The smaller lots are in, tend to be in this area. Larger lots are in this area, six thousand, five thousand. Again, this was a, a small lot subdivision that was approved with some deviations from the standards of the zone approved through the PD. For instance, front yard setback with the side entry garage could be a five-foot front yard setback and that is depicted in this location, right here. Side yard setbacks, five feet, right here as well. They're showing rear yard setbacks here. So essentially, these will be homes that can fit, what they're doing with these typical plotting plan is showing that there's a range of unit sizes and types that could be designed to fit comfortably on the lots, but we're not approving architecture at this point. The applicant is present and would be available to answer any questions you may have and this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Alex. While you're at the board, could you point out where the two-story units would have to be located if they are built?
My pleasure. We've required here for the two units to be two hundred feet from Sunrise, so they would be excluded from this section. They'd also be excluded two hundred feet north of the existing single-family here. This is a fairway location here. There'd be a two-hundred-foot prohibition, so essentially, these lots, they would not be located on.
So then they could have two, two-story units facing the golf course?
That's correct.
Any other questions of staff, laws of the board? Ms. Morantz?
Alex, the original application, was it always for two-hundred-and-twenty-seven units?
It was two-hundred-and-thirty-eight units. They've actually reduced...
Okay, because they've lost twenty-three.
They've lost some number of units.
Because there's twenty-three that would be taken out in the recreational area. Is that correct?
That's correct. And then they did compress some of the other lot sizes. That's correct, and then they did compress some of the other lot sizes and lot areas. The, the net difference is nine lots. It's a loss of nine total lots.
Okay.
Yes, there were always two entrances proposed, the primary entrance, the north entrance, and then this entrance, the southern entrance, they're proposed also. Well, you'll recall that the, the community that exists down here is a gated community. So there's really no, no mechanism to require them to connect since those are private streets within that gated community.
In addition, it actually doesn't connect. You know, you'd have to go through the golf course. You know, we, we've taken a look at how you might be able to do a connection, and actually we'll have an emergency connection that would cut across the golf course through one of the easements, but there's, there's really no way to connect.
Thank you, Alex. We'll open the public hearing then. Anybody wishing to address us on this matter, please come forward at this time. Give us your name and sign the clipboard, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. My name is Jason Lee with Burnett Companies, representing the project. Wanted to give you an update. I was here about a month ago for the west parcel that we got approved previously, and I told you at that time this was the, that was the second phase of a master plan project. This is the first phase, and one of the comments on that previous map was that we needed to have a larger recreation area, and I told you at that time we were coming back with an application, and this is it. So this application you see before you is a direct result of the negotiations we've had with our buyer, who's making, who's, who we have sold this to, who has taken control of the property, is just waiting to go forward with their design based on this approval. They are looking to include this as a major recreation area in order to make this, all three parcels that Alex was referring to as a master plan, active adult project. So that was the reason for coming back in and reducing the number of lots. I'm also here to answer any of your questions if you, should you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. There may be some after we close the public hearing. Anybody else? See none, we'll close the public hearing. Back to Commissioner, Mr. Caffrey.
I think it's a big mistake dumping the loop on this project, the, the loop road. If there was going to be an enlarging of the amenities, I would think that they would leave the loop road and circle around them. This doesn't make sense to me. It's a huge, long road now that dead ends. It was bad enough before, now it's twice as bad.
Ms. Conrad?
I'll ask for Mr. Schoenberger since he's up looking at the, at the map. Does that mean that this will be gated and the other parcel will be too?
Yes, on the, one of the conditions you had on the previous parcel was that if it did go active-adult, it was going to be a gated community. So we have sold this to be an active-adult project, to an active-adult builder.
While you're answering that question, I think we, we had a condition that you were comfortable with on the other project, that if it was not going to be an active-adult limitation, that you would agree that it would not be a gated, gated project. Are you amenable to that condition on this?
Yes, I am.
I totally agree with Mr. Caffrey that the loop, this is so onerous to get all the way down there already, and to, to dispense with the loop seems a poor, poor circulation solution. Couldn't the, couldn't the amenity be in the middle of the loop and leave the loop and still have enough lots?
We had looked at, we had looked at trying to maintain a reasonable amount of lots. We'd already lost eleven of the lots that we were trying to keep while maintaining a large recreation facility that would have the same amenities that the builder wanted to have. The builder had built a project previously in Temecula and wanted to keep the same type of amenities. It was a successful project for them. We're limited, as we make the turn around the corner by the width of the, of that strip coming down that length and having, having houses both on the fairway and not just having streets on both sides. The only area that we were wanting to have was off of the main entry, is have a large recreational facility that you would open up into when you came into the project and trying to combine all of those items. The only other option was to push the street towards the golf course entry, towards the golf course frontage, and that was something that we really didn't want to do because we're still in negotiation with the golf course and acquiring the golf course as a, as a further amenity for this project also. That, that, we've just gone into negotiations on the golf course. We haven't got a signed purchase and sell agreement, but we are trying to acquire it. So we're trying to make this, the recreation amenity contiguous to the future golf course so that it would become eventually one large recreational facility. But, yeah, the golf course-
That makes a lot more sense.
Sorry. Yeah, I mean-
If you're on the golf course, then it makes sense not to-
We've put an offer in, but we haven't gotten to the final point of negotiating it, so it's still out, up in the air.
Doesn't look nearly as bad if, if the golf course connects.
Well, aesthetically, yeah, that, that's great, but still circulation is a problem. For me, I see one row, you know, the old plan, if you just remove the one row of homes, you've got a huge amenity area, or, regardless of what you do with the other side of the street, whether you leave those or not, I just don't see any reason to, to leave it open. Even if they do own the course, what's the purpose of, are you going to put the, the new clubhouse there to service the course? Is that what you're thinking?
Right. The course is, the recreation building would double as than the clubhouse. So, I mean, that's why we wanted it contiguous to the golf course. The only other way is I reduce the, on the existing, on the new tentative map, reduce that second row of lots below it adjacent to the street, and then move those to the fringe of the golf course, but that's where we wanted to have-
Okay, let me ask you this, then. If you bought the golf course, wouldn't you have to reconfigure that hole if you were going to place the clubhouse there so that you had a tee there?
The holes, it was going to be planned to turn into a, an executive course anyway. It wasn't going to be maintained as a, as the current course it was in.
Okay, so it's going to be reconfigured?
Yes, it was going to be redesigned for the, for the design of the course.
So if you're going to own all the land, why couldn't you leave the road and put the clubhouse on the other side of the road and reconfigure the course since you're reconfiguring anyway? I mean, there's a lot of land there.
Right, but at the time, that's why I said I didn't want to bring up the golf course at the time because we're not sure, we've only put an offer in for the project. So we wanted this to stand alone as it was. The dilemma is that I've got, I've got, I'm trying to keep myself flexible to the options that I've got. I try not to lose as many lots as I could, but also try to take advance, take advantage of some future items that I know are coming up that they may not go through. So if I lock myself in on a tentative map, I'd have to come back again in front of you if I fell, if it fell through with the golf course.
I guess my point is, is if you don't get the golf course, then we have a goofy street. If you do get the golf course, you've got plenty of land to work with to do what you need to do.
The, the loop that you're, that section of loop that you are discussing comes off the entry and is the first sort of circular track that's in the project.
I think the comment is that perhaps this is premature in a sense. You know, depending on your, the outcome of your, your golf course acquisition can change the whole, the whole direction that you're, you're going here.
Yeah, unfortunately, I've already, we've already closed the deal with our buyer and seller, and the, the option is whether, whether or not, in their mind, the golf course goes through as an amenity or not, they, they still feel this project could stand alone without it, with or without it. The golf course only came into a factor in relationship of where the clubhouse would go. The clubhouse would still go adjacent to the golf course whether or not the acquisition of golf course happened.
Mr. Evans, can you shed some light on this and assist us?
Well, I'm going to make a suggestion that the city engineer might, might need to also give a nod to, or if he has a concern, you know, hit me in the back so that I know. If, if you take a look at, at what a couple of the commissioners have brought up, it's a very valid point. If you take a look at the upper diagram, you know, you, you really have an ingress loop that would be the most convenient to get to the east, and you have an, an egress or an exiting loop that would split the traffic probably close to fifty-fifty just because of turning dynamics. So that, it gives you a better circulation system. We've been working with, with this property owner on and off regarding the golf course for years. I, I can't tell you where they are in their negotiations, but the current property owner of the golf course, you know, drives a, a good, good hard bargain. They have an amenity, they're not going to give it away, but I think they have a great opportunity to make it into a viable project with, with buying into this particular development proposal. What the commission may want to do, and it, it may give Jason a little bit of a jolt, is you may ask us to craft a condition of approval that basically says that if they can tie up the golf course, they go forward with the proposal the way it's designed today because at that point they have a situation that ties in to the golf course, creates an amenity package, and I know that might not meet all the commissioners' expectations. If the golf course deal does not go through, that they basically take the row of lots on the new map that's adjacent to the, the east-west road, move them down adjacent to the golf course, put in a loop road that would basically service, you know, a single-loaded set of lots, that the lot number cannot exceed what's on that current map, and that they can come back in the final development plan stages with that refinement of the subdivision map. And I think between now and the council meeting, if the commission's comfortable, we could craft a condition that allows that to occur. The challenge of that condition is the golf course owners are known to negotiate a long time, and the project may wish to proceed, you know, because they, they have something that's known, they feel they have a product that they can sell with or without the golf course. You know, and we may get into a dilemma where they're still optimistic on the golf course, but they have to do something. You know, and I think it, it makes a lot of sense if you could tie the project into a, a golf course. And in theory, if you had to redesign a street later on to accommodate the golf course purchase and you didn't sell those fairway homes right off the bat, it's, it's probably something that, while it would be costly to come in and redesign, you could do it if you had to design it with the loop road to move it forward quickly. And then if you get the golf course, you come back in and tear the loop road out or design it differently and try to figure out how you redesign that whole area. But we could craft a condition, that way they would have the ability to perform, you know, in either option, and, you know, before the final map can be approved, the final development plans would have to come back to the commission. So you would have a looksee of what they're going to do, and then obviously the council approves the final map, and they would have the final approval of the map. I know that from a land transaction standpoint, a redesign delay is going to be a significant problem for the land acquisition program that's, that's way down the road.
What's the timeframe on that before, I mean, when would we expect the final map to come back to us? I mean, is that two years or is that, is that within sixty days?
I have to ask the applicant.
Yeah, the, the current owner, the developer of the active-adult is looking, as soon as I get through city council, to start working on his working drawings and his final map. So I'm scheduled for city council on the fifteenth, and hopefully as soon as I get that approval, they'll begin their working drawings. They're just waiting to know whether, which way to go on their final design. So within two months of design and two to three months of plan check, I'll have, I'll be in front of you with a final map ready to be recorded.
I have a question.
Just one second, as soon as Mr. Evans is done, I want to follow through with that. Yeah, I was going to say, he, he's saying that they want to proceed quickly, so, so what good does this condition, this, this alternative present to him unless he can really tie up the golf course in a matter of a couple of weeks? Is it really going to assist?
Then maybe it doesn't work, and we'll have to watch the commission debate today.
Yeah, honestly, I, I just don't know. I mean, like, like Mr. Evans has said, we've been in negotiation with them, and we've finally gotten to an offer point, but we're still, we're still unsure, and that's why we've tried to make the project stand alone with or without the golf course from an amenities point of view, without taking into account the, your, your comment about-
I have a quick question. The, the property that you're trying to acquire, is that the light green area only?
Yes. It's, portion of it adjacent to the project is the light green area. It continues all the way through and down.
Including the white area in between?
No, that's currently a mobile home park.
Okay, okay.
Well, how, how much of the existing golf course are you trying to acquire?
All of it.
Well, that's, there's a, there's a, there's a full-size eighteen-hole golf course there, and you're thinking of turning it into a, an executive course?
Redesigning it based on the way the, where the holes' locations start. It's undecided right now as to what's going on on, on the bottom half of it, but for the relationship for the top, the whole redesign, like Mr. Caffrey said, would need to be redesigned. Whether that go executive or not, we're not sure, but whole numbering would need to be redone, and whether that would give us a full, full-size eighteen or not, I'm not sure.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, from a, a planning standpoint, we, we understand the concern of, of some of the commissioners regarding how long that, that cul-de-sac is. We think we've got enough points of turnaround in it, so we're not uncomfortable with the length of it. If there was an, an outlet at the bottom end, we'd be even happier, but from the standpoint of the design and, and my comments regarding the internal circulation, you know, I, I wouldn't disagree that it's, the first plan, the upper plan, probably has a little bit better circulation, but it really doesn't shorten the length of the cul-de-sac, it just gives you two roadways. You know, from the standpoint of, of putting a condition of approval on, you know, to allow them an either-or option, you know, that could be something the commission could do. I know that the applicant's goal today is to try and get an approval as design because they have somebody that does want to go right into engineering design and build a project.
I have a question for city engineer. Okay, I remember when this first came around and we were joking about softball in the streets.
I wasn't joking.
So I guess that would be pretty much a moot point at this, at this time if it's going to be in a, an active-adult community. However, okay, bingo night. I mean, how are we going to get all these people out that one road, you know, without having fifteen, twenty cars lined up trying to get out that gate?
Well, I, I think the, the issue all along, irrespective of the traffic calming playing in the street issue, was the length of the cul-de-sac all the way down, and to me, it would be difficult to say that the elimination of the upper one-fourth of it is, is a major change to that. You know, the three-fourths of the length of the cul-de-sac is still there, so in my opinion, the change is, is not significant because it's just, just getting rid of the loop that's on the upper, you know, twenty-five percent of this, of this cul-de-sac. So when, when it was looked at in terms of circulation, yeah, probably having that loop would be a little bit better circulation, but the, the traffic pattern basically would be the same from the cul-de-sac all the way up, except for the, except for the upper one-fourth of it, and I don't think that's going to make it any markedly better. The traffic calming stuff's still staying.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. Then I would say there's no gates on this project, absolutely. That'd be my opinion.
Want to expound on that?
Yeah. How many homes do we have on that one street? And what kind of traffic is that going to generate with one exit for them to get out of the project that's gated? So you've got a gate opening and closing, opening and closing, people waiting. I just don't see that working.
An awful lot of lots on here. I mean, we're, you know, there's a lot of lots. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, if, if we take a look at the circulation plan, under both scenarios, you still have the same situation for people getting through the gates. They're just going to come in at a Y intersection, and obviously if, if one of the gates, you know, if the one gate is blocked up, you know, the people could continue south and go to the southerly access point, come out the other gate, just drive through their community a little bit further. You know, so there, there is, you know, an option for people if there was that type of, of backup. You know, if you take a look at areas in town and the, you know, the biggest cul-de-sac we have is down at the Canyon Hotel. Everything south of Murray Canyon basically is one big cul- basically is one big cul-de-sac. And for the most part, two-lane road. Pretty significant area. We expect to see another twelve-hundred to fourteen-hundred units built in that area. And, you know, essentially, it, it today funnels down to a two-lane roadway. And we typically don't have a challenge. Now, granted, on bingo night, if we don't have people using golf carts and walking in the street, as we do encourage sometimes, you know, we, we might have, you know, a little bit of a, a run back up to that facility. But again, I, I think that, you know, we're, we're comfortable, you know, it's a very awkward sight. And, you know, it, it's challenged, no matter how you try to design it, with a long run that, that eventually comes back to a gated entry point in some type of an intersection.
We, we don't have a gate at Murray Canyon.
You make a real good point, Doug. I hadn't thought of that being a cul-de-sac, which it is.
Yeah.
So maybe I'm, I'm okay with that, but it, it has reborn the issue in my mind about the gates, and I don't think a gate is a good idea on this project.
Dual exits? Yep. So you had a, a better channel out? You know, I, I don't know the unit count. Cathedral Canyon Country Club, the Palm Springs side, one gate in, one gate out. Probably a demographic mix that's not too far off of active adults. I'm only aware of one circulation problem that we've had over there, and it had to do with somebody trying to bring a U-Haul truck underneath the Portico share. You know, and, and we, we typically, that, that one works. We're probably, we might have a few more units on this one than we have on the other. I've, I've never counted the units that, that project predated me. Typically, in our residential projects, we've got a real good, steady flow, particularly senior housing, or active adults, because you don't have the peak in the morning, the peak in the afternoon. You know, you, you really have a more leisurely lifestyle, so you have a lot more intermittent driving. Maybe a little slower.
Mr. Evans, if, if there was a main clubhouse, whether it's as a golf clubhouse or just a recreational clubhouse, would, would there be a requirement for parking off-street related to that clubhouse? And if so, how extensive would that requirement be?
Without a doubt, we would work, you know, with, with the applicant, and define by the size of the clubhouse, the types of amenities, what are the peak use occupancies, and come up with onsite parking. And you'd probably have a circular ingress/egress system where you come in one side, come out the other, so that you wouldn't have just one there. You know, they probably have a, a couple of, it's a pretty good-sized recreation amenity, and I would think you might even have multiple places to park, as you might lay this out.
Are, are these private streets?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask another question? Does not the golf course completely encircle the mobile home park?
Yes.
And the mobile home park takes its access in a little street down here?
Correct.
So if you owned the golf course, you would have the opportunity to connect this really long leg out through the golf course and make a complete circle, and you'd, you'd have the opportunity for a complete loop, or at least some option?
The only point of connection would be the adjacent track below, which is across the golf course.
That's right. But you could make a, a roadway parallel to the edge of your property line through the golf course that could connect the whole loop out?
Through the exist, where the existing golf course currently runs.
Yeah, if, if you, if you owned it, right?
I mean, in theory, there might be a way. Here's, here's the project boundaries, wraps all the way around to this point. Here's the, the first loop of golf, you know, the second, the existing clubhouse back in this location. To come back through to the condo, or the, the mobile home facility, you'd have to, you know, go through the golf course. To come around and, and do another roadway would be rather land-intensive to come in, and probably not very welcome by the existing homeowners. So as you, you take a look at this, it is a fairly awkward way to try to get a roadway back and through, unless you came back through the mobile home park, which probably isn't the best solution for the two types of land use. I mean, I've, I've worked on a number of projects, and we always come back in this area. How do you punch that through? And, you know, at one point, we had a limited-access thoroughfare that went across here, but that wasn't even gonna have the ability to ingress and egress, because it would be off-grade and be a real challenge. You'd have to, one, you know, cut through the golf course, and then you'd have to, we'd have to pick up a lot somewhere along here to come through. There's no connection point through here, other than an easement that DWA has. And the emergency ingress basically comes through an easement that DWA has, just to get in and service the wellfields.
I hate to pick up Mr. Caffrey's ball and everything.
Go for it. I did wanna add one other item that I'd forgotten to mention on the, in relation to circulation. On our new tentative map, we have designed a, a walking slash bikeway path that goes behind the lots adjacent to the golf course. It's not shown on the colored original tentative map, but shown on the new tentative map as a connection point to the main focal recreation area. So it's a, it's an optional walking, walking course that enables somebody to walk instead of along the streets, but along these pathways throughout the project, without having to get in their car and walk to bingo night. They're at the end of the cul-de-sacs, behind the lots.
We have a motion?
Oh, I'm gonna sit back and listen for a few minutes.
Any further comments?
Well, to me, it makes a lot more sense if it's associated with the golf course. And I understand in the real world, that doesn't have much to do with it, but it, it seems a very awkward design. It's made more awkward if you don't have a golf course.
I don't know how, I mean, the, the amenity site you have there is, is, you know, fairly large site, but if you're gonna try and use that site for a golf course clubhouse, it's gonna get real small in a hurry. If you're gonna have any kind of parking, and, I mean, adequate parking, and, and, you know, some kind of a, of a clubhouse of any size at all, I, I, I don't see that particular site being able to accommodate that kind of traffic if you have an eighteen-hole golf course, and you're gonna put a clubhouse and parking in there. So I don't see that really happening. But this is just an awkward piece of property, and, and I, I don't know.
I have a question for the applicant.
Turn your microphone on, Mr. Caffrey.
He bought the existing track map, as is the new owner. You say the, the current owner, so it's already closed, he owns-
Yes, we closed it last week.
He bought that map, and now he wants to revise the map, is the idea?
Right, we submitted the map to planning prior to the, prior to the close of the sale.
None of this was contingent on the sale. This is just a new idea.
No, we had submitted this prior to the sale, and, and walked it through staff to get their opinions, to see if, if, both staff and engineering, to see if they had any concerns about the, about the loss of the lots or the circulation. And I think you'd heard from both, both engineering and the planning that they, they were comfortable with it. So that's why we brought it to this point. So we, we were going forward with our, we'd gone forward with the sale on the anticipation that staff was proposing a recommendation for approval.
Thank you.
Ms. Moran?
I'll make a motion, and we'll see if it flies.
Okay.
Move approval of case number 5.0866, Plan Development, for a revised preliminary Plan Development District, and a revised tentative track map for two-hundred-and-twenty-seven lot gated subdivision with residential, et cetera. Move approval. See what happens.
Leaving the gates?
Yep.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Moran, second by Mr. Grinch. The applicant has indicated that he would be happy to condition those gates on, on the senior community, and that if it's not a senior community, it would not have those gates. Do you not want to add a-
And I will add that as one of the conditions to the approval, yes.
I agree to that.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Conrad?
Why do I always start with me? First. You need to move your seat.
Play musical chairs, and you'll get a different chance.
I was there for a while. I'm gonna vote first.
Well, I'll, I'll give a reluctant yay.
Ms. Moran?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Grinch?
Aye.
Mr. Sean Berger?
No.
Mr. Caffrey?
No.
Mr. Klatchka?
No.
Tied.
We have a tie. The motion fails. Somebody like to make an alternative motion?
I'll approve the, I'll make a motion to approve the revised map with the deletion of the gates.
I'll, I'll, I'll second that, but, I'll second it. But I'd like to ask the applicant a question before we vote.
All right.
I recognize that you're way down the road on this thing. And being as far down the road as you are, and having received the approvals for this project that you have received, having sold the property in reliance on, or at least in reliance on what had happened before, I, I really don't wanna pull a rug out from under you folks on this, even though I've had reservations about this project from the first phase on through. But I voted for approvals along the way. You can see that we, we have trouble still with these gates. But before we do something here that creates a, a serious problem, what does it mean to you and your buyer to, to either have or not have gates on this project? I've asked you this before, and you said basically it was a marketing thing, and that you, you would rather have the gates. But if we approve this project with a condition that there not be gates, what does that create for you?
Seeing as we're no longer the owner of the property, that's something that we never brought up as a condition. Going on, my theory, my background for that was going off of the previous, last, my, the west half approval, and conceding that if it was gonna go senior, which I, we were in negotiations to have it go senior, that I was acceptable to having it go gates. That was the direction that our, that the buyer was looking. Their project, they've modeled this specific project after another project in Temecula. And they specifically had asked us to make sure that we did get the gates on the project, and that's why I felt very comfortable. If it didn't go active senior to that buyer, we could go without the gates. It was always a concession, if we were gonna build it ourselves, that we would go without the gates. But it was a, the major driving force was our buyer looking to buy the, have this project with the gates, 'cause they wanted to have this as a master plan community, especially with the second and the third half coming up. So it, it's more of a, it's, it's, it's a function of what our buyer wanted in the idea of what their master plan was gonna look like.
Is your buyer here?
No.
Because, I mean, there, there are a lot of, a lot of active senior communities that don't have gates on them. So I, I, I still don't quite see why that's such an important item. Can, can you read, do you know what your, other than, other than your buyer being perhaps disappointed, do you have any way of judging what this could mean to him, other than, well, we didn't get gates?
The only thing I can tell you is that this is a stage takedown for us. So this is the first stage of what they're gonna purchase. The other purchases are based on whether they continue on, whether, whether this project becomes successful. So whether they, they still have the ability to back out on us is our concern on this project. So I don't know how big of a deal. I, I really can't tell you. I know it was one of the items, it's one of the few items that they brought up as, as, as a change, as a change to the map, and as a specific condition, they did wanna have the gates.
Well, I, I'll tell you what, what, what my thinking is. I, I, I would, I would feel better, even though still not particularly happy about voting for the project. But I would vote for the project, or approval of the map, without gates. And if you're, this is still gonna have to go to council, am I right?
Yes.
If your buyer is, is extremely distressed about the gate issue, then I think he can take it up with the council. And they may, they may have a wholly, totally different view about gates than, than we do anyway. So there'd be an opportunity for the buyer, if this is really a critical issue, to make a pitch to the council on that issue. But I, I, I would much rather not have gates on this project, for all the reasons that we've said. So that would, that's my feeling on it. I, I will vote for this project, or vote for the approval of this map, without gates. If that turns out to be something that creates a terrible problem for, for your buyer, then I think he can take it up with council and, and make his argument there, since he can't make it to us today.
I, I, I agree with that direction. I think that's something that if I had the chance to speak to them, we can determine their flexibility or inflexibility on the gate issue. So I would agree to that.
And, and I'll just make an additional point about the gates on, on this particular development, especially without the loop road. Gates, and I believe our law enforcement has given us testimony in the past, at least in the last seven years that I've been here, that gates do not prevent crime. Gates slow down, they, they reduce traffic through the site. Well, the way this is configured, I don't think there's gonna be a problem with reducing traffic. Person's gonna turn in here one time, and they'll never come in again, so. Saying that, my motion stands.
Ms. Conrad, do you have further comment?
Well, I just wanted to say that I, I feel a little bit badly, I'm, I'm no fan of gates, but I think we made a commitment that if this was gonna be an adult community, that it could have gates. And so I feel somewhat badly about that. It's just, it's an awkward piece of land, and that's the reason you got my reluctant vote in favor, is just because it's, it's a very tough design solution. But it's too bad it's not more elegant.
Yeah, I, I share that comment, and that's, I, I can't, when this comes to vote, I won't be able to vote in favor of it, because I feel we, we debated this quite for a long time. And, and in our staff report, there were, there were, we had a copy of the, the resolution that was passed originally, including the comments and Mr. Jiaraski's extensive comment. But he, even he finally said, because of the configuration, gates would be all right. When we dealt with the property to the west, we did get the alternative agreement that as long as it wasn't gonna be senior, we would not have a gate. I voted no for the last resolution, Ms. Moran's resolution, because I'm just not satisfied with the circulation. And I like Mr. Evans' proposal to, to give them an alternative, to, to either go with the, to, to, to move the amenity package in, in the middle of the loop, or to, to approve the one as proposed, if they are able to tie up the golf course. And they have, whether that's two weeks or, or six months, however they choose to proceed, it'll give them an opportunity. And, and I could support that, but I can't support the existing proposal.
I have some more information I wasn't aware of. While I was out on Christmas vacation, we had signed a purchase-sell agreement for the golf course. So we are in, in the final negotiations on this golf course parcel now. It was signed at the beginning of the year. So that's a, a step further than I thought we had previously gotten to. And this means that we've, we're actually in our forty-five to sixty-day due diligence on closing this piece of property. So we're actually a lot further along than I had previously understood. So the option about moving it and the golf course relocation is something more viable to us with this information now. Because the, the purchase and sale of the golf- Because the purchase and sale of the golf course is something that's a lot more prominent and a lot more realistic now.
All right. We still have a motion on the floor and we haven't voted on it. But let me ask you, Alex, I know that Doug indicated he would have to leave at this time. He let me know earlier. But if we get to the point where we're considering something like that, can it be done in the alternative like he said? Do you have enough information to...
Yes, we do. There's a number of alternatives. Why don't we proceed with this motion and then I will address some of the alternatives.
If it's necessary.
If necessary, thank you.
Are there any further comments?
I'll just make a comment. You're making me feel a little bit guilty. But I can, I can still, I can justify my position. No, the comment about the fact that we had already approved the project without gates and I did that reluctantly, I do think we've got a new plan in front of us. And the plan in front of us changes the circulation pattern. Now, our engineering department tells us, well, not really a lot, but it does change it and to some extent. So I think I can still overcome my guilt. I don't know if anybody else can. Although I do want to, and I feel a little better about it because the applicant can go to council on that issue. And if the developer were here and able to make a, an argument that, for the gates, I might feel a little bit differently. But we don't have that argument and I can't, I've asked for somebody to make the argument since we began to review this project and still haven't heard a good one. So anyway, those are my thoughts.
All right, the roll call vote, please, Michelle.
Ms. Conrad?
No.
Ms. Morantz?
Aye.
Mr. Grinch?
No.
Mr. Schoenberger?
Aye.
Mr. Caffrey?
Aye.
Mr. Klatchko?
No. Motion fails three-three. Now, Alex, why don't you just fill us in on our options here, consistent with the direction that the director had previously led us.
Okay. One alternative would be to require a roadway extension which parallels the golf course and leave that as a condition. They do have to come back as a final planned development district. And essentially with the map approval, they have two years to do an extension of the map, time extension of the map and final planned development district. That may give them the time that they need to both satisfy that condition, have a better idea what their common area amenities and spatial needs will be so that they can design it to work. There is a concern that should they move forward with the requested map approval today that if there is a parking requirement associated with a golf course clubhouse, Commissioner Schoenberg summed it up, that might not be enough space, which may cause a further reduction in the number of lots in order to accommodate the common space amenity. That's something that we can take care of at the final PD stage or at a time extension of a map.
Can you tell us exactly what you mean by a condition that would require a roadway parallel to the golf course?
Essentially, it would pull the top loop on the, on the landscape plan and pull that loop down of the roadway.
Perhaps you could approach the board with the microphone and just point it out.
Would almost be a hybrid of the two plans, essentially with the open space here but wrapping this roadway to link it so that we have that connection. With that alternative, the problem is that you have created a recreation amenity here. You've got to get across to play the course, should the course come under control of this project, which, you know, it creates additional conflicts, which would be pedestrian in nature, golf cart in nature with vehicles. But that would be a result of requiring a loop road through here.
How about if we just condition in that they either reinstitute that roadway or come back with a redesign of the recreational facility that includes the golf course? Either or, and give them a map approval so that they can move forward. Mr. Lee, would you like to address that? Would that be acceptable?
I'm not quite, before he addresses, I'm not sure exactly what you're saying. Maybe you could restate it.
I'm not sure what I'm saying either. I mean, before Alex...
I think I understand what you're saying. In other words, they either take the existing map approved as is or they take the new map and delete the gates.
Well, or even just leave it even more open-ended. For me personally, I want you to acquire the golf course and redesign the recreational area that makes more sense. And I think it makes a lot more sense if the golf course is there. It doesn't look like such a long road because most people might be just going from their house to the recreational facility. And it would give you the opportunity to have traffic go by the front of the recreational lot and you probably will change where those lots are. I mean, I think that that whole thing should be subject to redesign. If you acquire the golf course, you're not going to want to have those houses right there in front of your recreational facility anyway. You're going to need that space and the whole thing would probably get redesigned and I can imagine it'd be here again, so.
Can I comment before you make your motion?
Please. Yeah, I'm not making...
They've already deleted so many homes, I doubt that even if they put the clubhouse...
Well, they might, they might choose to put them alongside the recreational facility instead of along that front roadway so that they could have access that way and not have to have a road behind in between the recreational facility and the golf course. It makes more sense to have it in front of it.
I agree.
So they could probably reconfigure it without losing lots, but...
You think so?
I mean, I don't think we're going to do it right here, right now. Would you rather have an approval with no gates or would you rather have to come back? That's what, I mean, really, that's it. Would you rather have an approval with no gates or would you like to come back and redesign your recreational facility with the golf course?
I think going to city council with the approval of no gates is something I'd prefer to have and have the opportunity to let my buyer come and express his concerns if he has any, which I believe he does, but I honestly, I can't really speak for him at this point. So I'd prefer to have that ability to go in front of city council with the, with the no gates and argue my point there with my buyer.
Would you like me to reinstate my motion?
Well, given that that's your choice, that assuages my feeling that we made a commitment to you to allow you to have gates with an adult community.
Left with the options that I had available to me, though. I mean, if I wasn't able to have the gates, I really have a concern about losing any more. I know my buyer has a concern about losing any more lots and by adding the loop road, they're making the recreation facility even smaller, which is what their original thought was, to make this project better by reducing lots and adding a recreation facility. So left with the decisions or choices I've got, I'd rather try and argue my point in front of city council and get this off to the next point, to be blunt.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'd reinstate the previous motion. Which was? No gates.
Approval of the map, subject to the deletion of the gates.
That's correct.
Mr. Schoenberger, do you want to second again?
I'll second that.
You have a second.
Okay. And I would encourage you to acquire the golf course and come back.
Hey, motion by Mr. Caffrey, second by Ms. Conrad. We've talked it to death. Let's have a roll call, please.
Ms. Conrad?
Yes.
Ms. Morantz?
Aye.
Mr. Grinch?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenberger?
Aye.
Mr. Caffrey?
Aye.
Mr. Klatchko?
No. Motion carries five-one. Good luck to you. We appreciate your efforts, even though we did have a lively debate. I think this would be an appropriate time to have a brief recess, 10 minutes. Thank you.
I like it.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're back in session. Next item number six, case 5.0937. I have a conflict of interest in this and will abstain. I'll turn the chair over to our vice chairman, Mr. Caffrey, please.
Thank you, Mr. Klatchko. Case number 5.0937, application by James Chioffi and Harold Matzner for a conditional use permit for an expansion to the Palm Springs Tennis Center to include the addition of seven nightlighted tennis courts and a 576-square-foot lounge building for use by the P.S. Tennis Club Members Association, located at 1300 Barista Road East, R4 Zone, Section 14. Staff report, please.
Thank you. The item before you, as you mentioned, is an application for a conditional use permit for tennis courts and night lighting. This is a Type II conditional use permit, which requires final approval by the City Council. Your action on this item is a recommendation. The subject property in its entirety is 7.15 acres. There are two lease areas you may be familiar with. The lease area for this project, or portion of the project site, is 3.6 acres. The sublease agreement requires, at a minimum, that the applicant operate the facility from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., five days a week, from October 1 through June 1. The zoning ordinance allows tennis courts pursuant to the tennis court provision of the ordinance. Where the conditions contained in that ordinance section cannot be met, courts may be allowed with a conditional use permit. On page two of your report, we have provided a summary of the areas in which this is a conditional use permit and does not meet the outright provisions for an architectural approval of tennis courts. The proposed setbacks to ultimate right-of-way would be one foot from the ultimate right-of-way on Arenas Road, 17 feet from the ultimate right-of-way on Hermosa Drive. And in terms of walls, chain link fence with green screen, kind of typical for tennis courts, is proposed, whereas the ordinance requires masonry wall, six feet in height. In addition, night lighting will be located in the required setback areas, as is currently the case on the existing tennis courts. I want to call your attention to a couple of late-breaking items related to this application that were not discussed in your staff report. Engineering Department has reviewed the conditions of approval and requests elimination of Condition 10, Barista Road, street improvements and right-of-way dedication, and Condition 11, Hermosa Drive, right-of-way dedication requirements. So that would be Condition 10 and 11 we're asking you to strike. And in addition, we have received a letter today from the Agua Caliente Band of Kewee Indians requesting the addition of three conditions related to cultural resources. The applicant is aware of these and would concur with their addition, that they are appropriate in this instance. Lastly, in terms of the project site, with this conditional use permit, we would have a total of 16 tennis courts. Under the Parking Code 48, parking spaces would be required. Seventy-two are currently provided on-site, so this does include two disabled accessible parking spaces, so we're over on parking. Given the code ratios, we could contain up to 24 tennis courts on-site, although there is no proposal to add any in addition to the seven before you today. The lighting plan is not in our possession at this time. It is a condition of approval, and the lighting that would be proposed will match existing lighting on-site in terms of height and types of box fixtures and locations. With this summary, I will approach the board and answer any questions you may have. Terms of the property and the surroundings, we have Barista Road, Hermosa Place, Future Street, there is no street there now, and Arenas Road. In the report, we did mention that there is a pending general plan amendment for the vacation, or elimination of Arenas Road from the general plan, from Hermosa all the way to Sunrise. There's a traffic report in the possession of the city engineer, which has been submitted by the applicant of the adjacent project that would support the elimination of this stretch of Arenas Road from the general plan circulation element, so that there would be no need to have that road segment constructed in the future. In addition, while the report did condition dedication of right-of-way here and additional 40 feet here, the engineering department has subsequently eliminated those conditions from consideration as part of the report. There are a number of light fixtures in the setback areas that exist in this area and this area, and the applicant is asking to follow kind of a similar pattern with lighting fixtures in these areas as part of this application. In terms of the project design landscaping and architectural design, the project was reviewed by the Design Review Committee, and the Design Review Committee concurred that this was an appropriate design solution for this type of application with both landscaping and building materials. I'm going to pass down the line the building materials. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is present and would like to have the ability to speak with you, and I think that we have a couple of community members present that have maybe some concerns about lighting as well.
Thank you, Alex. Any commissioner questions for staff?
I'm going to have to abstain, by the way.
Okay.
I'd like to ask that, can you describe the light fixture in more detail?
They are box fixtures mounted at 18 feet, column height. We don't have any additional information on the type of fixtures, whether it's going to be high-pressure sodium, but the provision in the conditions is fairly specific in terms of the types of lighting that's allowed and the height, and they would be required to adhere to those lighting provisions.
Alex, maybe you can explain to me how people would get from the parking lot to this facility, given the fact that there's an existing facility that's going to be between the new facility and the parking lot?
That would be my pleasure. As a condition of this lease agreement, there is a five-foot easement that is created right in this area, essentially behind the northeast corner of the parking lot. This five-foot easement, public access easement, is right here. There would be a fence on the west side of it. There currently is a fence on the east side of it, and it would channel arrivals from this area right back to the tournament court and the building. So it's depicted right here. Right here, five-foot access easement.
The Hagstrom lease building is here, so this would run behind that building.
Exactly. Now, the lease agreement was signed in September between the applicant and the council.
Any further questions? Okay, this is an item for public hearing. If you would like to comment on this item, please feel free to do so. Come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and place it on the clipboard, please.
Yes, my name is Myron Yulberg. I am the president of the Board of Directors of the Rose Garden Homeowners Association. That's a complex of 146 homeowners directly across the street from the proposed expansion that would be directly impacted by that proposed expansion. We have a five-member board. Four of the members are working, and therefore I've been appointed to speak for the entire board. I'd like to begin by voicing the concerns of Jim Peterman, who is the chairperson of our Architectural Committee. He writes, "I have reviewed the Palm Springs Planning Commission notices you provided for the proposed tennis center expansion and the Palm Springs Modern Homes' proposed development of 48 condominium units, which is going to be decided by this commission on January 22, on Barista Road opposite the Rose Garden. Notwithstanding that approval of these two projects is being considered independently by the Planning Commission, the potential impact on the Rose Garden should be considered together and in the context of potential future developments along Baristo, such as the pending proposal by Brentwood Retirement Communities for the development of an additional 70 condominium units just west of the tennis center. There are two primary issues. One, drainage. The projects noted above and any future development along Baristo will add a considerable amount of impervious surface, creating runoff currently absorbed by sand. How is this to be dealt with? Two, traffic. The issue is exacerbated by the fact that Palm Springs Modern Homes is requesting an amendment to the general circulation plan to delete Arenas Road, currently unimproved, between Hermosa Avenue and Sunrise Way. Has the impact of this proposal on Baristo traffic been adequately considered? Shouldn't the completion of improvements to Arenas be considered instead so as to offer an alternative access from Baristo? Does the proposed tennis center expansion site plan allow access from the existing portion of Arenas? I'd like to add the following in view of what happened today, which was quite interesting. The real, as opposed to imagined, impact on drainage was dramatically demonstrated this morning during the heavy snowstorm we experi... Snowstorm? That's a throwback to my Brooklyn days. Rainstorm, we experienced. At 9:15 this morning, I drove up and down Baristo from Sunrise to Caballeros and personally observed the following effects of this downpour. One, the water was pouring out of the tennis club driveway onto Baristo, not unlike a small river. Two, Baristo in turn was flooded up to my car's hubcaps at the point where Baristo, as it is designed to do, reaches its lowest point, which is directly opposite the Hermosa entrance to the Rose Garden complex. Three, at that point, the accumulated water flowed southwards directly into the short stretch of Hermosa, into the Rose Garden entrance, as it was designed to do, where it backed up completely, flooding Hermosa from curb to curb. The only storm drains in the entire area are at the end of this short stretch of Hermosa, which is a cul-de-sac that dead-ends at the Hermosa Wash. These storm drains, there were two of them at that point, were completely inadequate to handle this flow of water, which resulted in the flooding of the entryway to the Rose Garden. All this happened in the space of a 30-minute downpour. Had the rain continued at this pace, it is clear that the Rose Garden complex itself would have been flooded. Actually, all water on Baristo, as a point of information, is designed to funnel into the Rose Garden. Therefore, as today's rain dramatically proved, should the Planning Commission permit the tennis club to pave over the existing unpaved land for their proposed additions, and should the Planning Commission, further on January 22, permit the construction of the proposed 48 new condominium units on Baristo without the building of substantial new city drains on Baristo and Hermosa, Baristo between Sunrise and Caballeros would rival the Colorado River in flood season, with two results. One, there would be created a very real and substantial threat of flooding to the 146 existing homes in the Rose Garden. Two, an extremely hazardous driving road condition would also be created on Baristo, with potential negligence liability issues for the city of Palm Springs for permitting this known avoidable hazardous condition. In conclusion, the 146 directly affected homeowners of the Rose Garden are opposed to this application for an expansion of the existing tennis facility being decided today. Alternatively, we recommend a delay in the decision of this application to allow for a further study of the sewer problems that would result. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to comment on this item? How about the applicant?
James Chioffi, architect. I'm the applicant for this proposal. First of all, we don't have anything to do with the Palm Springs Modern proposal that's coming before you later this month, nor the Brentwood proposal either. So I don't know what that has to do with anything, and we really don't want to talk about them today. As far as what we're concerned, though, we've looked at this quite carefully. We're expanding an existing use on the property. It's a perfect place to do this. We already have nine tennis courts that are enjoyed by the general public here. Mr. Matzner signed a lease with the City Council to do this project for the next five years. The City Council seems to think it's a good idea. We're easily 400 feet from the nearest condominium, but the Rose Garden, maybe more. It doesn't have anything to do with the Rose Garden for lighting or anything else. We have a grading plan in place that the city engineers reviewed. All of our runoff water off our seven tennis courts will go into existing landscape area. In terms of lighting, we would... We were on the property on Monday at Alex's request to photograph the existing lighting so we could bring you a picture of what was there, because we're going to match it. And Mrs. Hagstrom threw us off the property, so we were unable to get the photos. So we just... We have a condition of approval that we're going to comply with the zoning ordinance, that we can't spill any light out past the property line. It's a typical 18-foot shoebox fixture. It's probably 150-watt light bulb, and it's probably a metal-hallied light, I would think. It's similar, if not exactly, what's there. And we have a nice landscape plan. There's a lot of existing trees on the site. Along the west side, there are three olive trees that are pretty well-placed that'll screen any light from those light fixtures that might possibly spill over to the west. The north is not an issue. That's a street that's to be abandoned, and there's easily 70 or 80 feet of open space that would be before anything else be built there. So we think it's kind of a no-brainer, but if there's any issues, we'd love to help you solve them if we can.
Do you have a question for the applicant?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
To your knowledge, have there been any complaints in the past regarding lighting on the courts that are there now?
I don't have any knowledge of that. So there may be and there may not be. I don't know. By the way, my street was flooded this morning, too. I've been here 40 years, and about once every three or four years, it floods up over the curb. I had to wait a while to go down Mesquite. Couldn't get down Mesquite this morning. I thought it was kind of a nice change, to see some water running into the flood channels for a change.
Thank you, Mr. Chioffi.
Good work, Marcus. Mr. Yulberg may have an issue with flooding on Baristo, and if he does, and it's an existing condition, but we're not... I don't believe we're adding to it.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to comment on the project? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and back to Planning Commission.
Alex, on Arenas, that we're... Apparently, there's pending... Some pending action to remove that strip of roadway there. Why would we do that? What's the thinking there? What's going to be there? We have a one-foot setback here on what would have been the Arenas right-of-way. If we abandon that right-of-way, the city abandons that right-of-way, then what's going to happen adjacent to the tennis center where we have the one-foot setback?
The pending general plan amendment would propose elimination of that portion of Arenas from the general plan, just for that segment between Hermosa to Sunrise.
What was the thinking there? Why would we abandon?
Well, the applicant is a... The applicant of the proposed development on the east side of this project, Palm Springs Modern Homes, is requesting consideration of the abandonment of that portion of right-of-way to facilitate their project design. They've provided some evidence that maybe that portion of the street is not required to handle existing and proposed future circulation, and the traffic study backs up that contention. My understanding is that there may be a future... There may be a connection on Arenas behind this road, but it wouldn't be at the width of the general plan designation. And for additional comment on that, I'd refer you to the...
Yeah, I'll just clarify. We actually have no right-of-way for Arenas. What is proposed as a future action is elimination of the... What, what is proposed as a future action is elimination of the classification of Arenas as a collector or secondary thoroughfare, I forget which, which would be consistent with what is being proposed for the Section fourteen plan. Arenas is not shown on the Tribe's Section fourteen master plan. So that's, that's why the, the developer of the future action is kind of jumping the gun and, and being consistent with what's going to be proposed with the Section fourteen master plan, EIR. And so the, the, there is, it's actually, their, their property line is the center line of what would be Arenas Road. There is no right-of-way for Arenas Road on this property.
Well, what, what happens to, to the space between the center line of Arenas and the edge of this property?
It's, it's currently as it is now. It'll apparently be unlandscaped, other than what's shown on the site plan now. It's, it's land that's owned by the district and leased by the city, and now subleased by the tennis center.
All right. So, so that land ultimately, if the, if the, if the Arenas, that part of Arenas is abandoned, or the idea of putting a street in there is abandoned, then that, that half-street, so to speak, would revert to the city, I mean, to the school district?
Well, it's still, it's the school districts now. There is no half-street there now.
Well, there's no half-street there now. There's nothing there now.
Exactly.
All right. But if Arenas were extended, that area that would have been occupied by that extended street is, is, the northerly half is going to go to the, to the modern homes folks, I guess, and the...
Southern half.
The southern half would, would remain with the school district. Have I got that right?
No. The, the future project you'll be considering is to the east of here.
Well, what, what I'm concerned about, and somebody help me here, either you or Alex, at the back of this tennis complex, we've got a one-foot setback from what was the, the edge of an extended Arenas Street. And what's going to happen back there? I know this is only for, 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 what, six more years or whatever, but what I'm concerned about is somebody wants to do something behind this property, and we've got a one-foot setback How might that complicate the situation?
Well, a traffic study will show and support the proposed...
I got that. We're not going to have, presumably, we're not going to have a street back there.
So what you have is a forty-one-foot setback, because the property line is the center line of what would be Arenas Road if it were ever constructed. So if Arenas Road were to be constructed, the city would have to acquire the right-of-way for it from the district, which would then create the one-foot setback that you, that you have raised as an issue. But as of, as it is today, what they're proposing has a forty-one-foot setback.
Okay. I think I understand.
You know, one thing to think about in terms of an application like this, it is relatively low intensity, meaning that it is kind of like a holding pattern for future uses. It's, you know, clearly a short-term sublease of a land lease from the district. But who knows the future use or dispensation of the land when it's developed at its highest and best use? The improvements that are proposed are two small, one existing small building and one proposed small building, and, and flat areas for parking and tennis courts. Those, those improvements are pretty easily removed to facilitate a...
Well, I, I was just, and I've answered my own question, because the, the, the school district has another eighteen, nineteen feet behind this facility, so that there really isn't an issue. It's all going to be part of that property eventually anyway, and so...
Correct.
I, I, I've answered my own question with your help.
Any other discussion, motions, questions?
I'd make a motion to approve the application.
Second that. Would the motion maker want to be sure he mentions that items ten and eleven are deleted?
Yes. Subject to the conditions of approval, minus items ten and eleven, that I guess the engineering department's happy to delete.
Right. And with the addition of the three additional conditions provided by the Tribe.
Correct.
Well, we have a motion by Mr. Schoenberger, second by Mrs. Morantz. This is a roll call vote. Michelle?
Ms. Conrad?
Yes.
Ms. Morantz?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenberger?
Aye.
Mr. Caffrey?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero two, with Mr. Granson, Klatchko abstaining, and I hand the meeting back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Just, if I may make a comment, Mr. Chairman. We, we will, with the speaker who, who addressed the issue of water runoff on Baristo, we certainly will be aware of that when we look at these other plans. I don't want the speaker to think that we're not sensitive to that, but I, I don't think that these additional tennis courts are going to measurably add to the runoff problem that's already there. I think the real problem will be when, when these, when these residential developments are put in, and, and they're going to be required to deal with their water. So I, I, I think that that problem will be solved.
Marcus, as representative of the engineering department, I know you're, you're listening to that. When those next projects come in, just be alerted that, that the commission will want to look to that, and I'm sure the neighbors will also want to have that issue addressed to some degree. I know you're very good at that. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda for consideration is number eleven. Sign program application by Cheryl Hurst for an amendment to the sign program for the Palm Springs Mall located at twenty-three sixty-five East Hockwoods Canyon Way. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairman. This is an application by the manager, Cheryl Hurst, of the Palm Springs Mall located at two-three-six-five East Hockwoods Canyon Way. There are exhibits on the board to my left. She is requesting a revision to the existing sign program, which would allow for businesses within the north corridor of the mall to display a sign on the exterior north fascia of the building. The current program allows only for businesses with direct entrances to the exterior, to advertise on the exterior of the building. The manager makes this request to encourage foot traffic to this area of the mall, which was recently remodeled, resulting in a dead-end corridor. Staff recommends approval of the amendment with conditions that the signage be limited to the tenant spaces shown on the submitted exhibit on the board to my left, and that the mall management develop a specific criteria for businesses using these signed spaces. This completes staff's presentation, and staff and the applicant are available for the commission's questions.
Skye, while you're at the, at the board, could you point out the locations and, and tell us exactly how many signs are being added or requested to be added?
Currently, there's three signs, three businesses actually fronting on to the north side of the parking lot, and they're proposing the other five spaces on the fascia for the businesses on the inside corridor. I've highlighted them in pink.
Is an applicant present, and if so, would you like to address us at this time?
I'm Cheryl Hurst. I'm the manager of the Palm Springs Mall. You folks were approached, I guess it was about two, three years ago, with an absolute preponderance of requests for signs, and this was prior to First Commercial Real Estate's acquisition of this property. There was something like forty-eight signs that were requested at that time. I came to Skye basically because of one tenant in the north corridor. We've got five spaces in that north corridor. Three are occupied. One is held by the management office. The other is a community service office. We have there. Those offices, of course, can be leased, those spaces. We have a brand-new tenant that is bringing in foot traffic of anywhere from four to five thousand people a month, and it really was at the start of their move-in two months ago that we initiated this wanting to have an interior space with an exterior signage. That's, that's really our, our reason for that. Do y'all have any questions?
Perhaps there are some commissioners, any comments, questions?
There is an...
Ms. Conrad?
Pretty extensive discussion at Design Review about the need for this. It seems pretty logical, and as long as it's limited to the businesses that are in that corridor, it shouldn't be a blight that, that we're all worried about. So it seemed, it seemed pretty reasonable at Design Review, and nobody had, had too much problem with it.
I walked down the corridor yesterday trying to get into the restaurant. Been walking down the hallway for years, and you end up at a dead end.
Yeah.
With a sign, where you have to cut through winchels if you walk that way. They need something to bring people in, and, because right now, it's, there is nothing there. There's no indication, unless you've been through the mall for the years, a lot of us have. You need a draw, you need a draw from the outside, so I think signage tastefully done, which appears it is, is necessary.
Anything further? Is there a motion?
Well, I was, I was here in those years when, in fact, it seems like we've had more signed proposals from the mall than just that one, that were very extensive and could have never been approved, and this, this seems like a reasonable request. And with that, I'll go ahead and move approval, since I always voted against it in the past.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Caffrey, second by Mr. Grinch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. See, when you're reasonable, we're reasonable. Next item, number twelve. Sign program application by Ontario Neon for an amendment to the sign program for the Plaza Mercado located at one fifty-five South Palm Canyon Drive. Skye, I presume this is yours again, please?
Yeah, I know, I'm not supposed to.
It looks good, too.
Yeah, and this is part of an architectural feature, which they may have been able to...
Thank you, Commissioner. This is an application by Ontario Neon for an amendment to the sign program for the Plaza Mercado located at one fifty-five South Palm Canyon Drive. There are exhibits on the board to my left, and they've also passed out some copies to the commissioners. The current sign program designates the city sign ordinance in relationship to size determinations of signs within this center. Section ninety-three twenty oh-nine of the sign ordinance allows a projecting sign of sixteen square feet and not to exceed the size of four feet in any one direction. The applicant proposes a double-faced, flag-mounted sign of painted aluminum and exposed neon to attract business to a new restaurant located on the second floor of the Plaza Mercado. After conferring with staff, the original design was reduced in size to approximate the currently two-by-six-foot exhibit before you today. The Development Review Committee has reviewed the proposed sign and recommends approval to amend the sign program. This completes staff's presentation, and staff and the applicant are available for the commission's questions.
Thank you, Skye. Caffrey?
Yes, the, the little light bulbs. What wattage are those? Or are they neon?
We had a whole conversation at Design Review about those, and they're supposed to be low voltage in, in amount of, of candles or whatever. They're, they're supposed to just be a little twinkle around the, around the edge, and we also had an extensive discussion about double versus single neon at the, at the blade, and the, and about the entire sign program of the building. And this is one planning commissioner that wants to make sure that the second falls sign comes down when this one gets mounted, and we got a commitment from the team that runs the building that the reason that the second falls sign has not come down is because they want to conserve on energy and just take it down when they're putting this one up and have the crane there only once. And so I'll reiterate that right now. But it was my understanding, and, and the applicant probably answered, that these little twinkle lights on the, are not like exposed light bulbs.
And they don't twinkle?
And they don't twinkle. But they are a very small little halo, very, very low wattage. And we also extracted a commitment to, to turn down the rheostat on this falls sign.
Thank you.
Skye, I had a question on the, on the existing falls sign. What are the dimensions of that? Do you know?
Commissioner.
Do you know if it's a...
I'm sorry, I don't have that information before me, but it's a little bit larger than what you're seeing on this sign, and I believe it was like five feet wide. It was more wide than long. I think you can even, if it's in the photo before you, you can even see the falls sign behind.
Yeah, it's difficult to tell whether it's six feet long or not. I know it is wider. I know the applicant is present. Would you like to address us on this matter? Not necessary, but if you'd like to, you're invited.
My name is Doug Petsco. I'm from Ontario Neon. Regarding the issue about the light bulbs across the top, they're about an eight to ten watt light bulb. They're frosted, and they just emit a glow. They don't light really bright or, or twinkle. It's just a glowing light across the top. We have provided a rheostat on this one that it can be turned down also, like you wish that the falls be turned down. And it's right inside, so as commission goes by and decides it's too bright or whatever, it can be turned down to, you know, meet your standards. And the falls sign is, I think, glancing at the drawings before I left the office today, about fifty inches wide and six feet tall. So it is a little bit wider, but it is exactly the same height as the Paradiso.
We're talking about the second falls sign that should have come down when the blade went up.
Oh, I know. I was asking for the blade dimensions, and I think that he's given them. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Morantz?
I know that this picture might give me a false idea, but the sign basically will be up higher and not just right next to the Cold Stone sign, because my question is, how are people going to know you're upstairs if it's, it appears from this picture that it's almost at the same height as the Cold Stone sign?
Well, we will make it the same exact height as the falls, so that they match.
It's going to be up higher?
Yes, and aesthetically, they'll look the same.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to ask that question, too, not because of the Cold Stone conflict, but, but this depicts it as blocking the, your balcony while the falls sign is a little bit higher than the balcony.
We will make sure that it matches the falls sign, so they look the same.
Any further comments, motions?
I'll move approval.
Jerry's been trying all day.
I've been trying all day. It's mine. Make a motion for approval, the application by Ontario Neon for the amendment to the sign program for Plaza Mercado at one fifty-five South Palm Canyon, with the stipulation that the second falls sign be removed at the time of the erection of this sign.
And Ms. Conrad?
I'll second.
Good.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. All right. Number fourteen, Commission Work Programs. Alex?
There's no updates.
What happened to number eight? That was taken off?
Did we miss number eight? No, I think we...
Well, that was approved.
Approved, okay.
Where are you?
I would comment on Commission Work Programs, number fourteen, that we do have a council cabinet meeting, and I think that Doug passed out with everybody's packet a general plan update. Did you get a little sheet on that? That's one of the agenda items on the, the council cabinet meeting as a separate called-out item to inform the council and the other commission chairs. And the, the outline that's, that's on the front here was prepared by Doug, and it kind of talks about where we're at, and then the, the attachment is an article from the League of California Cities Monthly publication, which, which is kind of a, an overview. One of the things to note, and, and really, this is the bottom of the outline, and it's also number one on the, the, the little article, is that there's going to have to be community involvement, and how that's structured is something that we're going to have to deal with, whether we're going to have a, a committee that's appointed by the, by the city council, whether it's going to be set up by planning commission and staff, or, or a combination of those things, whether the other chairs or other members of other commissions are going to participate. That kind of something that I'm going to bring up to the council, ask for some direction from them. I don't know how they'll, how they'll want to do it. Primarily, this body is the one that really conducts the hearings and everything, but there has to be a mechanism for getting community involvement. So this is what will be passed out tonight. Is there any, do you have any comments, or are there any other items that you'd like to see addressed at the meeting tonight? No? Good. My comments will be shorter then. Alex, and City Council Actions Update.
There's no update for you.
Number sixteen, Commission Staff Reports Request. Staff, first?
I'll give you a little update on the Estrella Inn. We have had some requests in the past for additional information. We've been in touch with the vice president of Core Group, which is the owner of a number of properties, including the Estrella Inn. They still, as of today, have not submitted the required documents in terms of parking and street improvements. They have indicated that they have moved further along in negotiations to get additional parking supply off-site, but they haven't finalized those negotiations. As you remember, we left it in July that they were going to provide drawings to enhance the parking and street improvements along the back drive on Kewee, and we have not seen those drawings yet.
Okay.
We'll keep you posted.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Caffrey?
I would have a possible item for your general plan discussion at council cabinet. The, one of the things we've been looking at on general plan is the, some of the streets that we have, which are never going to be what they're designated to be on the general plan, such as Marie Canyon being a major thoroughfare, or secondary thoroughfare, secondary thoroughfare, and as wide as it, four lanes. There's a great opportunity there for, the entire east side of that street is undeveloped, because it's against the law. That would be a great extension to our bike path through there, and if, if it was redesignated as a secondary, or not a secondary, but a collector, then we would have all that available street width to do something nice with. Just thought.
Yeah, no, those are the kinds of things that, that will come out in the hearing process, and, and presuming that you and I are still on the planning commission at that time, we'll bring it out. If not, as members of the public, we'll bring it out, and that would be the appropriate time to bring that kind of stuff out. And I know that members of the public are watching this as well, and that's one of the things that we'll be talking about tonight, is, is they should be thinking about what their goals and directions are for the city, because that's part of the, the general plan update. Yes, Ms. Conrad?
Even though I'm no longer on the historic site preservation board, I, I wonder if you would thank the council for extending the recent move toward designating Francis Stevens School as a, as a state historic site, for, thank them for the foresight of asking that that be extended to all of our Class 1 historic sites, because I think that was a great idea that even the HSPB didn't have.
Extending, I didn't hear what you, the second part of your comment?
The, the council thought of, they extended the idea of, of making all of the Class 1 historic sites in Palm Springs state and possibly national register properties, and the HSPB had not even, you know, dared to dream that big, and the council did, so I think they should be commended for that.
I'll communicate that. Anything further then?
Yeah, Alex?
Mr. Grant?
Mesquite, in the traffic column, Dave's been working on it, you know, with this, he's bounced back and forth through us, to the council, and back. Where are we with it?
Glad you asked. At your next study session on the 15th, you'll be looking at that issue, Mesquite Avenue adjacent to Demuth Park, and the engineering department has developed and further elaborated on some of the earlier designs that you've seen, so that'll be back before you in a week.
So, Dave will be climbing publicly, we hope.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just a quick report on development task force that I've been participating in. We, we had, I think, since we last met, since the commission last met, I think, two, two more meetings, there's another meeting on Monday. That task force is down now to crafting recommendations, and we're involved in that process now. The consultant hired by the city is going to give us a report at the end of this month, and following that report on, based on his review of the entire development process in Palm Springs, then this task force will finalize some recommendations, and I'm not sure what they're going to do with those recommendations, but provide them to, presumably provide them to city council, and it's been a, I think, a worthwhile effort, and a lot of people have spent a lot of time on it, and I, I do think there, that, that the task force will come up, come up with some useful recommendations to improve our development process. So, I think it will, it will be a worthwhile endeavor. The other thing I wanted to raise is, on Baristo, just down the street from the tennis center, there's a green building. It started out looking like a, a portable building, it's right almost against the sidewalk, there's no setback, but they're working on it all the time, making it more and more permanent-looking. What is that for, and are we keeping an eye on it?
Yes, there was a permit issued for a temporary construction and office for the Palm Springs Modern Homes development at 48 at Baristo. You'll be seeing that in the next couple of weeks.
Is that where it's going to be?
That's the location of it, and that's, right, that's their construction office.
And that's just a temporary building?
That's correct.
Okay.
Anything further?
Board request.
Go ahead.
It's, just, it, it comes up as I notice at Our Lady of Solitude Church that they've erected a fence, Alex, and I wonder, one, if they did that with a permit, and, two, in anticipation of what's going to be a very heated debate, is there any documentation that the, the staff could provide us without too much work about exactly how we service the homeless population in the city currently?
Tracy, on the first item, I appreciate that information, we'll look into it. On the existing services for homeless, I will talk to someone that's our staff representative for the homeless task force and see if I can get some feedback for you, for your next meeting.
Locations and hours and services provided.
When is that item scheduled to come up? Has that been formally determined?
We have a draft agenda date in February. I don't have the exact date before me.
All right. I had just one follow-up, the, the two trees that were removed in front of the Jack in the Box as part of the Palm Springs Mall, should have asked the mall representative while she was here, but what's the status of that? Did we determine whether that was done appropriately or not?
I'm, I'm not aware of that. I can get some information, get back to you at the next meeting.
Okay, it was raised a number of weeks ago, and I know within the holidays, it probably got lost, but let's not forget about it.
You got it.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing further then, meeting adjourned, thank you.